I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. This is our regular meeting for Thursday, April 4th, 2024, and it is 1:01 PM. And I will ask our Director of Public Works, Ryan Stendel, to please lead us in the flag salute. Thank you, Ryan. I'll ask the city clerk to please take the roll.
Councilmember Molado, present.
Councilmember Marker, here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Downs?
I'm here. Next, we will have non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you wish to speak to an item that is on the agenda, please wait until that agenda item is called. Please be mindful of your three minutes. If you do pass the three minutes, please forgive me if I nudge you to speed it along. And I will ask the city clerk to please handle non-agenda public comments.
Thank you. The first speaker is Darrell Terrell.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Darrell Terrell. I'm not speaking as a City of Moreno Valley Planning Commissioner, but a resident of Moreno Valley. Stolen catalytic converters are a county and even a statewide issue affecting many of our residents and local businesses. These thieves have no boundaries and no conscience. It is important for you, Honorable Mayor and Council, to reduce the chances of these crimes occurring in your city by assuring your deputies have the necessary tools and laws in place to come back and prosecute these thieves. Currently, deputies' ability to protect the public and punish catalytic converter thieves is very limited. A deputy who encounters an individual in possession of a catalytic converter must locate the rightful owner before making their arrest. If the deputy cannot locate that rightful owner, the person may be released. That's why on September 12th, 2023, our County Board of Supervisors adopted County Ordinance Number 987 as a means to prosecute those who are unlawfully in possession of a catalytic converter, regardless of whether the victim can be identified. In other words, if you're in possession of a detached catalytic converter, you must be able to show proof of ownership or face jail time. And this ordinance was vetted, when I'm holding my hand, through the DA's office and the county council, and it was found to be lawful and not in conflict with any other state law. In addition, the DA has agreed to prosecute any violation of the county ordinance. Now, that's why my city of Moreno Valley, Eastville, Corona, Norco, Canyon Lake, Hemet, San Jacinto, Temecula, Banning, Beaumont, Palm Springs, Cathedral City, Desert Hot Springs, and Blythe have adopted ordinance like the county or similar. And that's why I drove from Moreno Valley to ask you, Mr. Mayor, and your colleagues to consider adopting this ordinance. Because this ordinance will make it a crime to possess a catalytic converter, unlike what the state law says. If you are in possession of nine or more, you're considered an automotive dismantler, which is crazy. And they don't even consider it as a license violation. So, Council, I hope you would take up this issue and so we could create a uniform enforcement throughout our county. So, any creep or thieves that try to steal anything in this county, they will be held accountable and go to jail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Ragsdale?
Forgive me for being so slow. I want to say that I'm here because I want to turn lemons.
Susan, I apologize for interrupting you for a moment, but would the gentleman who spoke about catalytic converters?
I'm sorry.
Please wait after we finish with all public comments. Then we'll address issues that are important after public comments. But please wait. You'll be interested here what we have to say. I'm sorry, Susan. Please go ahead. You can start the clock over again for Susan.
I don't... Okay. So, I'm here to turn lemons into lemonade because a very serious wrong has happened, and I want to try and help everybody fix it, make it right, and learn and grow and become better at what they do in life. There's been a lack of consciousness and concern, and unfortunately, I'm the one who's taken the beating for it. I don't mean to be rude or disrespectful. I prepared packages for each council member, each member of the Housing Authority. I'm an artist, and I put it in this bag that came from the British Museum for books. Anyone can have it. Inside is some artwork, and each package for you all is individualized with your name. I investigated your biographies on your website, and I tried to orient what I'm giving to you toward you specifically. So, I'll give this to Kristi, and she can give it to you later. So, my statement is not too long. Excuse me. All right. I'll show you. This is long. Just that long. Okay. So, the title is Fraud. The Rancho Mirage Housing Authority put me in this horrifically unwelcome position. The Rancho Mirage Housing Authority is guilty of fraud against me on two counts, one for gross negligence and the other for the malicious prosecution of my illegal eviction. Starting in January 2020, the Rancho Mirage served upon me 14 false, baseless allegations of harassment until finally my tenancy was fraudulently terminated in May 2022. My fraudulent eviction occurred because I repeatedly complained to the property manager about being sandwiched between terrorizing misogynist bullies who continually victimized me with the tort of outrage and defamation from March 2019 until I moved out in February 2023. Being unlawfully served with numerous nuisance warnings is the ultimate in harassment. I have suffered from long-term extreme traumatic stress, which has rendered me seriously disabled and physically damaged. Naively, I always treated everyone with respect and decency, expecting the same in return. I was meek, and I gave everyone the benefit of the doubt, from hostile tennis bullies to Richard Kite. In May 2018, when I moved into my home, I was absolutely fine. Being sandwiched between two sets of aggressive bullies plus being served with 14 baseless allegations of harassment has caused me serious damage, almost utter destruction. This hardship has taken a toll. In 2021, I went from 135 pounds to 95 pounds. That coupled with living in my 2006 Toyota Matrix during the summer of 2023, I lost my mind due to traumatic stress. Seriously, really. I never... I... I'm sorry. I almost died in the summer of 2023, parking all around Magnesia Falls Cove, my home, with the temperature at 120 degrees, my hatchback open and sweating all night. I continued to experience panic attacks, and I hyperventilate. I tremble and have challenging agoraphobia. I almost always ruminate, "I'm not okay. I need my mom. I want to die." It's been going on for years. It's hard. I never could have imagined unlawful, immoral, and shamefully sinister behavior from a city council, the elected officials in charge of taxpayers' donations. With a smile, I'm demanding justice finally be served ASAP because I'm not doing well. I'm not doing well at all. I'm getting worse.
I have to ask you to please move it along.
Forgive me. Okay. One option would be to take a meeting with me and my attorney to negotiate a settlement. I told him this case is worth $1 million in cash for damages. I am an innocent, poverty-stricken elderly woman with five horrific years of suffering, which is completely the city's liability. Another option would be to restore me to a city apartment where I can feel happy and safe. I need a home where I might stand a chance of recovery. I would appreciate the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority cleaning up my God-forsaken reputation. This is the most extreme case of character assassination imaginable. In addition, restitution is indicated. Free rent for the rest of my life, along with appropriate compensation for damages, might be a solution. If you continue to be shockingly unaccountable for this federal crime of fraud, I will contact the HUD Federal Inspectors, who arrive at the end of the fiscal year in order to determine if the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority qualifies for federal funding. I don't like to do threats. No way, Jose. This is not my style, okay? I just want to say there's something I could do, and I will deliver my case to them. I insist the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority be accountable for this horrific, inhumane crime against me. This action represents breach of duty of care to the hilt. I'm willing to take an informal meeting with the entire Housing Authority and Marcus Aliman. I would like to personally present my case. I believe this opportunity could be beneficial for all concerned, and it could turn out to be... I don't know. I commend the housing manager, Marcus Aliman, for allowing me to write emails to his office after the traumatizing swindle of an eviction. His merciful support kept me from going off the deep end entirely. I so thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah. All right. I'm getting there. Give me a minute. I really move very... I've become an old lady, you know? Enjoy this, please.
Wally Melendez?
Good afternoon, City Council Administration. Two things. I hope you're all doing well. You know, I've been to other city council meetings, and usually they have the city manager and the city attorney at one end, and the city clerk and her assistant at the other end. And they have the five elected officials in the middle, with the mayor in the middle, and the other assorted departments scattered about. I think that's about a lot better seating of the panel than the way it is now. The other thing I want to say is, how has anybody in this group visited Riverside, the city of Riverside, the county seat of Riverside County, of which Rancho Mirage is a member? Right there, maybe a couple of years ago, the city of Riverside installed a hydrogen charging station. It would be a very good idea from my viewpoint, not that I'm personally in great need of it, but something that is needed for the future of America in California and Riverside County and Rancho Mirage City. These are charging stations, the hydrogen charging stations that we're talking about. I realize there's a lot of politics involved in there because of the oil companies and the traditional car manufacturers that build this gasoline-burning, poison-spewing giant cars that are left running so that people can keep cool in their cars. Whereas if they had an electric car replenished by a fuel cell, they could stay in the car all day and not, like I said before, not spew any poison into the atmosphere, into the air that we breathe. The hot months are now here. The hot months are now here. That pollution from the gasoline furnace and the hot heat is going to kill people. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally.
Brad Anderson?
Hi, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I don't think I've ever came down that side. Something new today. Anyway, I wanted to speak on a few items. One being the last, the most recent meeting you had, a city council meeting where you elected to supply the city manager with increased revenue and benefits. And I'm going to write... I'm going to submit written statements to that fact, too. But I feel that whole process was done illegally. Just because of how they... Well, not because of how the agenda was set up, because you eliminated my right to comment on that agenda item. And you did a report out officially before the public comment. So, it should be maybe a do-over and at least look at it. And I would like to hear back, if that's possible. And some close session topics that you've been discussing today, I will bring them up in detail, but I have written my comments. I... Maybe I'm going to just put this out there and suggest it that maybe the city clerks should be elected position versus appointed just because of the election factor involved with the city council. And just think about that and maybe consider that. And just the main topic of my letter today that I will be submitting is more or less, I want to call it a hit piece, a written comment in a local, I guess, internet news network. I'm not going to say it by name, but since I haven't gained permission to do any of that, I'm not sure. I haven't done that before. I have not complained, but commented on a news piece before. But I'm disappointed, embarrassed, more or less, from the City of Rancho Mirage allowing this attack piece to go off on a resident of the city. And this has happened before with other prior council members. And this is a maneuver, I feel, that's being used in a political nature to select candidates for the next election. But I'm, like I said, I'm just deeply saddened that maybe city resources were used to gain this information that was issued in that report or that's statements of the city manager. So, I just want to voice my opinion, and hopefully, if anybody's out there want to know more, I'll be submitting written statements and pinpointing some of my facts. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something not on today's agenda? Thank you. That was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. So, I wanted to wait until all of the public comments had been made before we address any of the issues that might have been brought up during public comment. And I do want to make sure that we speak to the gentleman who talked about catalytic converters. We are looking into it, and I will ask the city attorney, city manager, rather, to please do a... Tell us what we're up to on catalytic converters.
Yeah, so we do have a copy of the county ordinance, the Cove cities, so Rancho Mirage, Palm Desert, Indian Wells. We partner together on law enforcement. So, the three cities are coordinating on an ordinance similar to the counties. So, that would come forward in the future to the council when that is ready.
So, I hope that helps you with your comments today. Thanks very much for waiting until we had an opportunity to talk with you about that. Okay, council board member comments. I'll start with, from my right and go to my left today. So, Councilmember Molado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three short comments, if I may. I'd like to congratulate our cultural commission on the recent artist reception in Artist Studios, Studio. This was a wonderful event that featured Rancho Mirage residents and their artist talents in various mediums. On Friday, March 22nd, there was a wonderful reception at the library, and our thanks to the library, too, for hosting this. And it was just marvelous to see the various talents that are out there among our residents and for their willingness to share it. Our residents are featured, and there's no charge to them to share their talents, and we welcome more in the future. The second item I'd like to comment on is the 50th Anniversary Book launch that was held at the library in celebration of the city's 50th anniversary. Congratulations to our marketing department, who did a marvelous job in working with Desert Publications to compose this book. And each resident received a book in their mailbox in celebration of our 50th anniversary. It's a wonderful baseline, if you will, of our history and 50 more years to go. The last item I'd like to discuss is the Desert AIDS Project Chase Awards. This was a wonderful event that raised over $2.3 million for our valley residents that seek medical care at the Desert AIDS Project. They not only provide services for AIDS and HIV, but for other ailments, medical issues, medical needs, psychological needs, emotional needs for everyone. And their work is commendable. I remember when there wasn't a Desert AIDS Project, when I was in X-ray tech many, many years ago, and it was devastating, as an understatement, that the care was not available to help so many of our residents. Today, residents from across the valley receive the highest level of care on every level. So, congratulations to DAP on their wonderful event Saturday night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Molado. Mayor Pro Tem Wile?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too. I'll hitchhike just for a moment on Councilmember Molado's comments regarding the 50th Anniversary Book. I have received nothing but praise regarding the book. It is so well-received and so appreciated that kudos to our marketing department and all of the people that worked so hard putting it together. It's something we can all be extremely proud of. So, again, congratulations to everybody that works so hard in producing that. I want to talk about Cotino and an update on where we are. And first, I'd like the video to be played that was produced regarding Disney. So, if you would, play that video now.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brett Iwin, and we're here at Cotino, the very first Story Living by Disney new home community. Today, Anthony Henry is here to give us an inside look at how the Disney touch is coming to life.
Are you ready?
Yeah, let's go. Anthony, I was here a couple of months ago, and this place was just a bunch of dirt.
I know, right? And we're making great progress. So, we're here at the main entrance, which is going to set the stage for the community as a creative oasis.
It's looking great.
Are you ready to see more?
Absolutely.
Let's go.
So, Anthony, where are we?
So, this is Long Table Park. It's going to be the centerpiece of Long Table Park residences for those 55-plus. It will be a place to get together, play games like bocce ball, and have cookouts. And over here will be the pavilion with shaded seating and patios.
I can imagine people wanting to spend a lot of time here.
You know, Brett, when I look to the future, that's what I see. People making memories and creating friendships.
I'm witnessing magic in the making, so what's next? Oh, my gosh. Homes are coming out of the ground.
Yes. Shea Homes has begun construction on these first model homes, and we've been hosting guests for pre-sales appointments.
Incredible.
Our first home sales are underway, too.
That's so great. Anthony, thanks so much for this inside look.
Anytime. My pleasure, Brett.
That was great, and I can't wait for more updates as Cotino community moves closer to welcoming future residents. See you real soon.
I have talked about Cotino for some time, and I keep making the statements that it is going to be transformative. And indeed, it's going to be. From a personal standpoint, in my prior years, I was a developer of master-planned communities in Northern California, Southern California, and Nevada. I had a development at Lake Tahoe, and there was another development very close to me called La Honton. And La Honton was developed by DMB Development. That's David Mary Boye, the same developer that is doing Cotino. Their style, taste, and cachet is emblematic of Rancho Mirage and what attracts people to our city. It has a class and dignity that we are very proud of, and it's our objective to maintain it. An update on the specifics that was referenced in the video a moment ago. The 24-acre Cotino Lagoon is under construction and will be filled by the end of the year. By the way, CVWD's estimate of our turf conversion program with an investment of $3.75 million will save approximately 100 million gallons of water per year versus 25 million gallons of apparition from the lagoon. A tremendous savings. So, people that express concern about having this wonderful body of water, I think we have done everything within our power from a sustainability standpoint. The Gerald Ford Gate House is anticipated to be completed at the end of April, a few short weeks. The age-qualified park in the area of over 55 requirement is under construction, and the Gerald Ford Parkway landscaping is currently being installed. If you drive around the perimeter of Cotino, you'll see the landscaping is coming in beautifully. No expense has been spared, including a wall at about $250 a foot. There are several builders that are building homes now. Shea Homes is proposing 116 total homes with seven plan types, six architectural elevations. The square footage of their homes will go from 1933 to 2925. Woodbridge Pacific is proposing 39 homes, five different plans, four architectural elevations, with an option for an ADU. ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, including an option of a pool and cabana. Square footage of Woodbridge is $34.75 to $45.57. The third builder, Davidson, is 113 total homes, three different architectural elevations, and again, ranging in size from 3,000 feet to 3,900 feet. Quite large and is going to be architecturally brilliant. The Clubhouse Campus is in building check at the present time. The Par House is under review. The Par House will be a facility for members available for membership and joining, whether you are a property owner or not. The entitlement on this project, keep in mind, was done in 2019. So, it's not like this is brand-new or just has come on the horizon. This has been planned for a long time. Originally, going back a number of years, this property called for first one, then two, then three golf courses. That would have used an enormous amount of water. That would have used an enormous amount of water. I think that DMB, now with their entitlements and what they've done, and by bringing Disney in as a financial partner, have come up with something that is going to be absolutely sensational for our city and for the entire Coachella Valley. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm very excited about it, and I'm thrilled to be able to bring a progress report to us today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Marker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also follow up with the 50th Anniversary Coffee Table Book. I am thrilled to extend my warmest congratulations to our marketing department on the successful collaboration with Palm Springs Life for this creation. Your dedication, creativity, and hard work have truly shown through on this project, which promises to be a valuable addition to our community's cultural heritage. The partnership with Palm Springs Life showcases your ability to foster meaningful collaborations and highlights your commitment to excellence in telling a story of the beauty and history of Rancho Mirage. I have no doubt that the Rancho Mirage Coffee Table Book will be cherished by residents and visitors alike for years to come. Well done.
Thank you, Meg. Councilmember O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Gabe knows that I love the 50th Anniversary Book, too. I'd like to congratulate the City Emergency Preparedness Commission for the excellent earthquake preparation program they presented last week. They provide a great service for the community all year long. I'd also like to let everyone know that the City Cultural Commission is sponsoring live entertainment at the River every Saturday during April. There'll be a different band each week. This week, it's Leanna and Miguel performing Latin jazz. Concerts are at 6:00 PM, and the admission is free. Also, the Coachella Valley Symphony will be performing music from Disney and Pixar at the amphitheater on April 20. Admission is free, but you do need to go on their website to reserve your spot, and it will be a lot of fun for the whole family. Finally, I'd like to congratulate two outstanding Rancho Mirage citizens. First, Rich Ronzello, the city of Rancho Mirage's 2024 Honoree at the Senior Inspiration Awards. His contributions to our city through his work with the COPS program is invaluable, and thank you, Rich. Job well done. And also Dr. Terry Kedover, who was honored at the Steve Chase Awards at DAP Health for her work as founder of the Do the Right Thing program, her nine years on the DAP Health Board of Directors, and for chairing that organization's 100 Women Major Donor Program. She's also given so much to the Palm Springs Art Museum, the Barbara Sinatra Children's Center, the Boys and Girls Club, and much more. Congratulations, Terry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. So last weekend was the Gallery Classic Champions Golf Tournament at Mission Hills Golf Club. This was the second annual. Hopefully, it will follow for years and years to come. There's a photo of me with Retief Goosen, who was the tournament champion when he received his award. This is his first PGA Tour Champions title in a little over two years. Now, the charitable partners for the Gallery Classic, they support, the Gallery Classic supports six cancer-related organizations in the Coachella Valley, and those charitable partners are the American Cancer Society, the Desert Cancer Foundation, Eisenhower Health, Hanson House, Pendleton Foundation, and Shea's Warriors Life After Cancer. So the Gallery Test, it's a proactive tool for multi-cancer early detection. The Gallery Test can be used to screen for cancer before a person becomes symptomatic, when cancers may be more easily treated and potentially curable. The Gallery Test can indicate the origin of the cancer, giving healthcare providers a roadmap as to where to explore further. So save this date for next year, March 24th to March 30th, 2025, for the next version of the Gallery Classic. The other item that I wanted to speak to today, oh, by the way, I'm sorry, we do have a highlight video, so please show that, Josh.
Par four first. Remember, he made 10 birdies yesterday, and he was dialed in right away.
Well, he hit a good opening tee shot, where there should have been a little bit of nerves, and no problem, then stuffed it with his second.
That would get him to 12 under par. Steven Alker playing with him, rolls in this birdie, putted at the first.
I think this was a big confidence booster for Alker.
We mentioned Gonzalez hit a poor tee shot at the third. This was his third, just off the front of the green.
Out of the second cut, little chipping run up the slope. Bam, no problem.
See if he can make a good swing here. A little bit right of the flagstick, but safely on the green.
Yeah, good shot. Got a pretty good look from right there. Okay, his button stroke looks all right. Just center cut. How about that cookie?
Goosen, another good look at birdie.
Just off the edge of the green, should move a little to his right. There you go.
Most improved from yesterday, John.
Yeah, he three-putted yesterday, kind of got him in a little tailspin.
Up at the green, this is the third for Alex Chaka. He's three back. He will soon be two back.
He isn't messing around with it either. He's ready.
Retief Goosen for the win at 18. And there it is! Goosen makes par at 18, and the World Golf Hall of Famer has picked up his third win on the PGA Tour Champions as he wins the Gallery Classic.
Thank you, Josh. So I was standing there on the 18th with Retief Goosen when he received his trophy. And for those of you who watched the tournament, you would know that there was a lot of drama between the 18th tee box and the 18th green. And it was the case that at one point, there could have been as many as four players who might have tied for a playoff, and the two leaders both ended up in the lake. They both hit it in the water, and Retief still came out, he got up and down in two and won the tournament. So I said to him, standing there at the 18th, I said, "You guys sure gave us a lot of drama there on the green at the 18th." And he looked at me, he says, "I would really have preferred a lot less drama, but thanks very much." So there is another issue that I do want to talk to today. It has to do with the Riverside County Transportation Commission, a thing called the Traffic Relief Plan, and a 1% sales tax if it is voted in by the voters this coming November. About four weeks ago, the city manager spoke to this issue here at a council meeting. Two weeks ago, I spoke to this issue. And last Monday, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Committee had an item about this issue on the agenda. And today, I want to update council and the public on what transpired at the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Committee meeting on Monday of this week. Little background, so this is a document called the Transportation Relief Plan. So this plan, you can get a copy of the plan if you like, from the Riverside County Transportation Commission website. It tells you about a wide variety of very important projects that are planned for the Coachella Valley over the coming years, and tells you the reasons why it's important to consider this 1% sales tax that may be on the ballot this coming November. Now, there was a public survey that the Riverside County Transportation Commission did to try to determine whether or not the public was in support of this plan and what the public's priorities were. And more than 65% of the public respondents to this survey were favorable, at least initially favorable. When I say initially favorable, this traffic relief plan that I just showed you a moment ago, it's a draft. It's pretty fine, pretty close to final, but it's in draft form, and the public has an opportunity to comment on it. And it's also the case that the specifics of the ballot measure have not yet been released. So the initial favorability rating is exactly that, an initial favorability rating of 65%. Now, the two biggest priorities that those respondents to RCTC's own public survey said that were most important to them, they said it was roads, make our roads drivable and safe, and fix our potholes. Now, the problem is this, that this traffic relief plan and the 1% associated sales tax proposes that 100% of the sales tax dollars go to the Coachella Valley Association of Governments for a variety of programs that are outlined in this plan. Now, the issue there is that the cities in this, in the Coachella Valley, are the agencies that do the roadwork, that actually fund the roadwork, fix the potholes and fix our roads. And so at the moment, or at least as of last Sunday, before the Coachella Valley Transportation Committee meeting on Monday, the concept was that all of these funds would go to SEVAG, but SEVAG doesn't do any of those things that the public said were the two most important things that they wanted done. So there were a number of, the city manager made a number of comments, I made a number of comments and complained about this issue, and both Mayor Protem Wile and I met with Tom Kirk, who is the executive director of SEVAG over the last couple of weeks, and Tom agreed that we should fix this issue. And so here is the result of the SEVAG Transportation Committee meeting on Monday. There was a staff recommendation to the committee that the committee direct the executive director to develop policy recommendations for a regional pavement management program for SEVAG's regional arterial roadway network. Staff proposed a $250,000 study to look into doing this, and the Transportation Committee approved that study. It's just a study, it's not final. So what does this mean? It means that if the 1% sales tax is passed in November, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments will take over the cost of pavement management in our cities. It means, at least for our major arterials, it means that for roads like Dyna Shore, Gerald Ford, Frank Sinatra, Country Club, Highway 111, and Monterey, that we no longer will bury the expense of repairing those roads, SEVAG will, which of course will free up dollars for us for other important budget issues. It's not that much different than if these funds had come directly to us. So the devil is in the detail, and we have to wait to see the final report from SEVAG to determine if we are okay with this. I certainly, and I think many of my council colleagues, would have preferred that some of the sales tax dollars would have come directly to Rancho Mirage for important issues that we can easily prioritize in our city. But this is a good start in the right direction. It may get us to the end result that we had originally hoped for, just in a different way, and I am very pleased that the Traffic Committee of SEVAG voted in favor of doing this $250,000 study at our last meeting. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we will move on with the agenda, and next is, let's see, city manager comments.
None today, Mr. Mayor, so I'll move right into the consent calendar. The council has seven items on the consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt Ordinance 1215, second reading, repealing Ordinance 860, deleting Section 17.10.014, revenue generating uses in commercial zoning districts from the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. Item number three is to approve your March 21st regular meeting minutes. Item number four is to approve your March 25th special meeting minutes. Item number five is to approve the extension of completion date for Track Map Number 36809, Del Webb Rancho Mirage. Item number six are contracts. Item number seven are the demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, I'll hand this over to the city clerk for public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any items on the consent calendar? No speakers.
Okay, I do have a question on the consent calendar. It's item number five. Let's see, item number five is the extension of the completion date for Track Map Number 36809 for Del Webb. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks to me like there's a wrong year here at the end of the specific request, maybe April 1st of 2025 instead of April 1st of 2024. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry for the typo, yes.
Okay, all right. That's all. Anybody else?
We do have two council members that will need to recuse themselves from this item.
Who's recusing?
I need to recuse myself. I'm a resident of Del Webb.
As am I.
Okay. All right, and they can stay in the room. They don't have to leave the room.
Correct, because it's on the consent calendar.
Got it, okay.
So the council can split up their votes.
Okay, may I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the consent calendar.
Less item five.
All right, less item five.
I'll second it.
Let's have a vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now we'll vote on number five.
So Ted, would you make the same motion, including, or I'm sorry, make the same motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar, including item number five.
So it would just be item number five?
Right.
You already approved the consent calendar, all the other consent calendar items. So just a motion for item number five.
Item number five of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion carries 3-0 with councilmembers Molado and O'Keefe recused.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, we will next go to reports and informational items, and this is an update on the Palm Springs International Airport from Commissioner Keith Young. Keith, thanks for being with us today. Glad to see you.
So good afternoon, Mayor Downs and council members. It's good to be with you again. It continues to be my honor to represent to you the council and the city at the airport commission. Since I was last before you, I was asked by the commission's leadership to serve on its master plan working group. So alongside the chair, vice chair of the commission, as well as my commissioner colleague from Palm Desert, I've been able to get into some of the nuts and bolts of the master plan. I think that's given me greater insight and hopefully greater influence for our city as we continue to contemplate the future of Palm Springs. My brief remarks today will really focus on three areas: the continued growth demand at our airport, and then ultimately addressing both the immediate challenges of that growth as well as the longer-term challenges reflected in the master plan. So this was the second, that is, 2023, was the second consecutive year of record traffic growth at Palm Springs International Airport. We had 3.24 million passengers traversing the airport in 2023. And the growth is reflected, the growth is reflected in these depictions of scheduled departing seats. If you look here, the gold or yellow bar representing 2024 represents the departing seats for April and subsequent months. You'll note that while the seats were up in April for the subsequent months, May through August, the available departure seats from the airport are actually down a bit. That's a reflection of several factors, three of the most notable of which are listed there in the lower left-hand corner of the slide. One is, if any of you have flown through SFO recently, you know that there is runway construction there. As a result, over the summer in particular, United and Alaska are reducing some of their flights out of SFO to multiple destinations, and that will impact seat availability out of PSP. Southwest is reducing their San Jose daily summer service due to demand issues, not as much demand for that in the summer, so that has reduced seats. And finally, we've all heard about fleet issues related to Boeing availability of aircraft. Several airlines, including United, Alaska, and Southwest, all are having fewer fleet deliveries than they had anticipated relating to those delivery issues, and that has also affected seats out of our airport here. How are we responding to this growth at PSP? Here are some of the anticipated projects, both in design and implementation phase for 2024. As you can see, the checked baggage inspection system is in the design phase this year, as well as the inbound baggage claim, which is both in design and will likely begin construction later this year. I'll comment on that in a moment, because it has some implications for our favorite airport subject, parking, and I'll tell you about that in a moment. Restroom remodel is in the design phase. There are currently Wi-Fi upgrades and replacements in process. There will be a shade structure installed in the courtyard, so post TSA, post security. That will be installed this summer. I'm not recalling if it's May or June, but it will be sometime this summer. And then you will see, evolving over the next several months, completion of additional restaurants and shops where you now see much construction. Some of that has actually changed just very recently. Only last week, in the Bono Terminal, there was vending that was opened. That's new. Nine Cities Craft, which you see pictured here, prior to its soft-launch opening this week, is now open. So if you travel through the airport now, it is operational. That is in the regional concourse, that is, the Agua Caliente concourse. And then as the year progresses, you'll see opening of additional restaurant and shopping outlets, including Cactus to Clouds, Coachella Valley Coffee, and Trio. Here are some artist renderings of some of those, just so you get a sense of what they will look like. This is Cactus to Clouds. This is the restaurant that will be in the sunny Bono Terminal, so where you see construction in the midst of that terminal at this point. This is what that will look like, and again, the anticipated opening for this. This is what that will look like, and again, the anticipated opening for this is at the end of May, so it's not too far off. Vino Volo is an outlet that's located at some 30 or 35 other airports across the country. You might have encountered it at SFO in Terminal 2, or in the Bradley Terminal at LAX. It's a wine bar with food offerings, and its anticipated opening is in mid-November of this year. And also in mid-November, we anticipate the opening of Trio, the Palm Springs Outlet, Modern California Cuisine, will be opening at the airport, and if that remains unscheduled, that will be in the latter part of this year. You may have read about the Stay in Play program that was introduced earlier this year. This actually allows a limited number of non-passengers to clear security and be present in the terminal area of the airport. The opportunities this presents for travelers or those accompanying travelers is that you can accompany a person to the gate, you can meet a person at the gate, particularly as additional outlets roll out at the airport. If it becomes attractive, people can actually clear security and just go enjoy the airport when more outlets are available there. The way this program works is that a person goes to the Palm Springs Airport website, which is flypsp.com. You'll submit an application to the TSA. If that is approved, if it's the same day, it can be approved in as little as 15 minutes. You can apply as far out as a week, and if you have applied further out, the approval would come through at midnight the night of the day you wish to actually visit the airport. It is limited capacity. That is, if it's a time of high demand, you may not be able to get a pass if you otherwise desired one, and you would have to clear standard TSA screening, as opposed to those shorter lines that many of us may like in terms of pre-check and clear. Those are not available for use in this program, but it is a new and relatively unusual program recently introduced at the airport. Finally then, to move on to a bit of an update on the master planning process to give you a sense of where we are there. You've likely read some about this in the local press. When I was last before you, the airport commission was considering two to three different alternatives. Ultimately, the one that the commission recommended to the Palm Springs City Council and which it approved at its December meeting was what is known as Alternative 1A, or pier expansion. Among the inclusions here will be a new southern pier, number nine on this depiction, a new concourse with a federal inspection station, that is ultimately to allow for customs and immigration here onsite in Palm Springs, includes the baggage claim expansion as well as the ConRAC, number seven, which is the consolidated rental car facility. Here's a different depiction of that, just to give you a sense of how that might look. The perhaps most significant feedback from the Palm Springs City Council related to this plan when they approved it was they wanted additional options to be considered for the location of the ConRAC. So, the rental car facility pictured sort of on the left side of this, in a yellow, the multi-story facility, the Palm Springs Council asked that alternate locations, both on airport and off airport, be considered for that facility. Those are being evaluated at this point in time, looking at the relative advantages and disadvantages of different locations. I would anticipate that probably over the next two to three months, that the airport commission will make an updated recommendation related to the positioning of the ConRAC facility. Beyond sort of terminal improvements, part of the master plan will be airside changes. I put this slide up simply to give you an example of what those might be. The red cross-hatched areas here that are transition areas between the runway and the taxiways are areas that according to new FAA regulations are considered less safe than they were once considered. And so, in terms of the angle of airliner approach to the runways, those need to be revised to comply with current FAA regulations, just an example of the many things that will be changes on the airside. And finally, some of the relevance of all of this to parking, which again, we talked about a bit at my last appearance before the council. This is just a depiction of what you all know, the four primary parking sections at the airport, terminal adjacent, as well as the overflow in the upper-right portion. You probably all do know that you can check in advance of your trip to the airport to see what parking is available. What's depicted here was both, this is a screenshot from Sunday night when I was putting together these slides, interestingly, it was also the same shot from earlier today, showing really very limited ability, excuse me, availability at these times of high travel as we're currently experiencing. So, overflow parking is in operation at times like this because of this very limited availability. Here's where these improvement projects, though, may impact our parking. What you'll see here is not a final plan, but rather, one potential alternative for the expansion of the baggage area at the airport. And again, this is a project that you will likely see advanced this year, construction will probably occur later this year. If you look around the four terminals, the area that is in sort of the aqua blue on the left and the upper side represents an expansion of the building in which the baggage claims are currently located. So, in order to expand this baggage claim area, there needs to be a bigger footprint of the building. As that expands, both related to construction, but also related to the expansion of that square footage, that expansion is going to squeeze into what is now the rental car parking areas. So, we still need to have parking areas for rental cars, and one of the likely results, before I go on to show you the next slide, you'll see temporary bag claim in the upper-left part. During this process, even though some of the current bag claims may be used during that expansion, some of this will have to be in temporary facilities, and that too will actually be in the area of the current rental car locations. So, what does that mean? If you look here, you'll see in the orange where it says temporary baggage claim, how that will intrude on rental car areas. This is not a final plan at all, but I offer this up to give you some sense of what will likely happen with parking. Lot A, which is currently available for us to park in, may very well become an overflow car rental-ready location with additional parking for those of us who are locals and wish to park perhaps in the overflow areas. There are other possibilities being examined as well, such as moving all the rental cars to the current overflow area. Again, no final decisions on this, but I do just want to give you a sense of what some of the challenges may be as we grow and adapt and produce better facilities. Finally, I think the council members, regrettably, I only brought copies for the council members, so I apologize for that, I'll know better next time. The airport did produce its first annual report this year. There's a lot of sort of interesting data and statistics in there, and feel free, if it raises any questions or comments or feedback, either obviously now or in the future, to reach out to me, let me know how again, I might best represent your concerns or any of those of our respective constituents as it relates to the future design of the airport. So, with that, I will conclude my report, but happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Keith. Great report, appreciate that very much, and I'm guessing that my council colleagues might have a few questions, but we will do a public comment, so Kristi, would you handle that? If any member of the public would like to comment or ask questions of Keith, please feel free to do so. Kristi?
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? No speakers.
Okay. Questions?
Well, again, thank you for the very complete report, very, very thorough. I'll tell you, from a personal standpoint, when I have had occasion to pick someone up, to me, the, you know, the great godsend is the parking area where you can wait, you know, in your car, check on the arrival time, and then go over to the particular gate, as opposed to circling the airport. That, to me, is just a terrific convenience. Now, is that area being affected in any way as far as this master plan is concerned?
My presumption, I do not know specifically. My presumption would be, Mayor Protam, that I think it's widely recognized that that capacity is very much appreciated and necessary. So, while I don't know exactly the location of that, my presumption would be that it would be maintained in some form, and I will certainly pass that along if that issue does come up.
Great, thank you.
Certainly.
So, I like the Stay in Play idea, especially with the new shops and restaurants that are coming. So, does the commission, I'm guessing there might be other similar programs at other airports around the country? Do we know if there are other similar programs, and do we know if they've worked okay?
There are some. When the program was first presented to us, we were, you know, told that there are a limited number of such programs, but not widespread, and they apparently do work just fine. There were questions raised appropriately about, you know, are there issues related to security, et cetera, but there haven't been any clear patterns of any problems that way.
Okay. And then, the rental car building. So, I assume that it might be the reason that the Palm Springs Council asked for more studies on where the rental car building and facility ought to be located, but it looks like the, when I saw that on your presentation, the yellow rental car building is roughly where the current rental car parking lot is located, is that right?
It covers some of that, yes, but some of that area would be used for the expansion of the baggage claim facility. So, it would certainly extend beyond where the current, it's the same general area, covering some of the current spaces for rental cars, and some of that would then be used for the expansion of the baggage claim. And then, the likely new sort of north-south pier of the airport would be east of the baggage claim area in that depiction.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question regarding efficiency. When travelers arrive to the airport, passengers are going through the security check line. My only recommendation is, we travel in and out of the airport, we were flying to Nashville recently, and we noticed as we were in line for approximately 50 minutes to get through security, there were three security guards for TSA pre-check, global entry, and nexus with one lane. There was one lane for clear entry, and then there was one lane with two security guards for all of the rest of the passengers. There were hundreds of regular travelers without the TSA pre-check, and only a dozen maybe in that time lapse that went through. So, my only recommendation would be to, you know, manage the passengers, because you want them to leave Palm Springs with a good taste in their mouth. People use the airport because it's small, it's efficient, people like to be in and out, they don't want to have to go to Ontario or LAX to wait two hours. People fly out of Palm Springs for a reason. There was a woman who was in line with us who had come down from Redlands because of the ability to be in and out in an hour and 15 minutes. She almost missed her flight as a result of this, and we don't want to lose that intimacy. Palm Springs is a wonderful intimate place, even though we're growing, and the Greater Palm Springs Tourism, they're doing a fabulous job driving tourism up. So, it's just, in my eyes, it's so important to maintain what we have worked so hard to bring these people here for and not drive them away.
Thank you for that. I'll pass that along to the Executive Director. It is also the case that frankly, the airport is in high season, that's our big challenge, the seasonal variation. Is it in high season, we really aren't built to accommodate the number of passengers we have transiting through in high season, and it leads to some of the problems that you're describing? But I will definitely pass that along to the Executive Director. Yep.
Councilmember Molado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keith, thank you again for another in-depth report, we really appreciate it. You know, I was most impressed with not only the numbers, but the plans for this airport, and I had a flashback when I was approximately seven years old, and I flew in a prop plane to land on one of those runways. For all I know, it could have been a crop duster I was in, but I can't, I just, I'm so impressed with how our airport is expanding to meet the needs of not only our local residents and our visitors, and kudos to the commission. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Keith, anything else that you want to add?
Not at all. Again, just thanks for the opportunity to serve, appreciate it.
Thank you, Keith. Great report today, thanks very much. Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item, actually, the action calendar, and the only item on the action calendar is Agenda Item Number Nine. The subject of this agenda item is consideration of resolution of intention to annex territory comprising 4.32 acres of Community Facilities District Number One in connection with the tentative parcel map number TPM 38692. This staff report will be delivered by financial analyst Jacob De La Cruz. Jacob, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. This item is the first step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the May 16th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the southeast corner from the intersection of Country Club Drive and Wilshire Palm Drive. It is comprised of one parcel totaling approximately 3 point, excuse me, 4.32 acres, and the project is slated to construct three one-story buildings totaling approximately 75,000 square feet. The parcel map was originally approved by the city council on October 5th, 2023, with Condition of Approval Number 35 for the project requiring it to be, the territory to be annexed into Community Facilities District Number One. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD-1 and provide for expedited approval of the annexation and the levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and establish the date and time of the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jacob, I will ask the city clerk to please conduct public comment on this item.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on item number nine? No comments.
Thank you, Kristi. Do I have any council comments on this item? Hearing none, may I hear a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council approve and adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One, and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. Preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation number 195.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, that concludes the regular agenda. We are about to recess into closed session. Before we do that, I will ask the city attorney to please summarize the items that we will discuss in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be convening in a closed session for the two items listed before you on the agenda, the first being public employee performance evaluation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957, the public employee being the city clerk, board secretary. The second item being conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6A. The designated city labor negotiator is Isaiah Hagerman, the city manager, and the employee organization is the Rancho Mirage Employees Association.
Thank you, Colin. We are recessed into closed session. Okay, we are out of closed session, back into open session. I will ask the city attorney to please review discussion in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action today.
Thank you, Colin. We are adjourned.